The planning board meeting for July 12th of 2022. It's being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. It is being recorded and will be posted online, but if anybody is recording it, I said, fine, you just need to let us know. All right. We have everybody in person here today. We'll start with the town planners report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of business items to base upon. Why don't we start? Megan was kind to distribute some information from Calhoun's desk. So this Friday marks the end of the COVID-19 related. I'm going to call it to allow us permission, exemptions to accommodate remote participation by board members. So from that point forward, we'll see what develops with the state. We are fortunate that we're not right up against a meeting those following week. But we'll keep an eye on those developments so we can establish whether or not members will be allowed to attend remotely. For the time being, remote participation by the public will continue. Let's see. We did receive two requests for information from Brad Moyers' desk related to subdivision regulations. At certain point in time, mid seventies and the second request related to the series of parcels. Of I think it's around two, around the 300 range at Granville Road, a series of lots that are all accessed. By a right of way on the plan, currently a pre-existing non-conforming common driveway serves a few. You may recall that Mr. Rabin's case purchased the landlocked acreage for his own purposes. So we'll see what is that, do you send any further discussions? The board, or at least Mr. Chair, received a questionnaire from Mr. Jim Sullivan over at the ranch. At this time, unless there is further input from town council, the election is to not proceed with responding to that questionnaire. It centered on the Craig Moore and R matter. From I think 2019 or so, where a landowner at the ranch purchased a budding property and recorded on the required plan. That essentially established a perimeter around those two lots. I think this has come up in discussions and conversation, the homeowner association position is that these are based on those two lots from the subdivision plan. I think that's the source of the debate. But having said that, much any further question for numbers, I want to reach out to maybe have to discuss. Let me just double check my list here. No further business from my desk this meeting.
7:05 public comment. Anybody have anything for the board tonight that they want to bring to the board's attention that is not on the agenda? All right. Maybe five minutes. April 12.
Yes.
All right. Minutes from April 12, do I hear a motion to review those minutes? Should move. Do I hear a second? Dave speaking second.
Marcus Phelps abstain.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave, I.
Justin, I.
The minutes from April 26.
On page two, sir. About the third or fourth sentence down. So this role will be constructed between two existing holes, the Hillside Road, Mr. Carney described the in detail. The project. Okay. A suggestion, whatever you want, fair enough.
Project is good. Say that, wait, hold on, hold on. Where is it? Yeah, Marcus changed that. Says Mr. Carney described in detail what property will look like. Right here, I'm more than to approve the April 26 minutes with Marcus's.
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Richard Singer, second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty's, I. Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been, I.
Justin, I.
Okay. Go to the public hearing. The comprehensive impact statement. Notice public hearing for Tuesday, July 12, 2022 at 7:10 p.m. via Zoom in the LA news hearing room, 454 College Highway. Notice this is given in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 41, Section 81. The town of Southwood bylaws that the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, July 12, 2022 at 7:10 p.m. via Zoom in the LA news hearing room, town hall at 454 College Highway, South of Mass, to discuss the adoption of a code comprehensive impact study handbook. Zoom information is provided. The planning board will consider the adoption of a local regulation, a comprehensive impact study handbook, to set technical standards under the pending Chapter 185-921 major development or D bylaw. Bylaw was approved at the May 17, 2022 annual town meeting. Copy of the proposed handbook may be inspected by contacting the town planner, John Goddard, at his phone and email address. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposal should appear at the time manager designated, Michael Doherty, chairperson, Southwood Planning Board. Oh. All right, so. Let me. Page one looks pretty good.
Oh, yeah.
Think you can move right past that one.
Well, actually, it says study.
Says study. All right. What do we decide?
That's what it was going to be, study statement. Now it's a statement.
All right. Actually, I have a chance to.
So there might be some other changes. Maybe a global change, studying the statement.
We'll figure it out as we go.
Yeah.
All right, so. First paragraph here, and then we'll kind of go by topic. Any suggested changes to that first paragraph? And actually, since we're going through it this way, as we would like a decision, but this is a public hearing. And we don't have a ton of people on Zoom or in person. What I'm going to suggest is that if anybody in the public or county officials have comments as we go along, probably makes sense just to make those as we go along. I'll certainly come back at the end for any further public comments, but if anybody wants to make stuff and grab one, or we can always conduct some more people want them, but we also have here. All right. So. Comprehensive impact statement is required to be prepared by an applicant. That's paragraph. If anybody has any changes on that, let me know. That's mostly a preliminary paragraph. Anybody? No. We'll go down to the first category, which is traffic impacts. It has two sections here. Anybody have any proposed changes to section one or section two? Comments on it or questions about it?
What we're going to describe with the P cars are just leave it open at this point. Depending on who it is and where we are. Could be peak hour for one business, not peak hours for another business.
Yeah, I think we'd like that be defined.
Okay.
And that's, it probably does depend a little bit at least on location. I am going to separate these with a sunny column.
In that paragraph, third line of averaging peak speeds. Both peak is right. Or John, what do you think? Is it maximum?
We'll legal.
You know, whatever we're trying to get at there. I don't know if that came from any traffic engineer documents. We want to look at two different averages. I feel if one, if the first is looking at the overall and the other one is and pardon me, it's been a long time since I took those statistics level courses. But since you're looking at that upper average, top 10%. Excluding the highs and lows. I'm not sure. What does that get us? What does that inform us?
I mean, you're going to be looking at is there's going to be.
I would, I mean, we're interested in the posted speeds, maybe for the roads in that area as to how quickly vehicles can move through.
Well, no, but I mean, like, for example, I think of like South Long Yard or Matthews Road, I mean, peak speeds on those are going to be significantly higher than the posted speed limit because people fly on those routes. And so knowing that it's a road that people are speeding on sort of regardless of enforcement. If you're doing a traffic study, that's easy enough to do. There's some. No, I don't know.
Well, they have the strips they put on the road.
Yeah, but the trips will log the speed.
They will want to speed too.
They have to.
With that, Chris.
Yeah, okay. Don't ask me for that quite, quite how, but okay. I got a, I got a swim from across the head. Had to do in Warren, Massachusetts.
I'm not wearing glasses. Be grateful. I can't say the things I'm thinking without glasses on.
Glasses, that's your brain?
Yes. Are you kidding me?
I don't remember where that came from.
We back.
Paragraph.
In March.
We were talking about it.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing I would say. I gotta just look at that. But in the bylaw, we have the right to know to define what they have to go to or eliminate certain things. Yes. So I mean, if it's certainly something that's clearly is not applicable, we can eliminate out that portion of it, like I think in the bylaw. You know, you need to do a traffic. You need to provide information on traffic impacts. You don't need to do X, Y, and Z because those aren't going to be applicable this year. Right? But I mean, it just, I don't know. I'm not sure there's anything in here that is all that's much of an addition to a typical traffic study or that much of a cost that on to which a typical traffic study. But I don't know enough about this, but nothing strikes me as being all that unusual. I think John jumped it onto you with any of those categories. I thought to you as.
Is it possible for us to get our hands on an actual impact study of some kind that has been previously presented to a board in that sort of situation? So we can see what is typically included so that we're not, from this point forward, excusing every applicant from including B because they don't do that on average traffic impact studies and.
That may not be all inclusive.
What was this?
It may be particular to the project.
Yeah, that would be a good example. That would.
I'm sorry.
What is. Ask the developer to request an engineering firm to do a traffic impact study at a particular location. What is the general information that you're going to get? I don't want to be asking developers for something that isn't typically included in the average traffic impact study because we have it listed here. Like something like average, average speeds, like, okay, average is whatever the posted speed limit is. And are there peak speeds? Well, we're going to know that. But yes, but so then why do we have to, let's just not keep it here in this particular piece. But you wouldn't know it after unless we already know that that's a peak, that that's a roadway that experiences speeding higher traffic speeds than posted. You know what I mean? Like, that's not information I'm looking for them to provide to me. And if I'm going to be able to exclude it, it's because I already have knowledge of it. So that's what I'm just saying, before we put it into a handbook, let's have in front of us when actual traffic impact study gets you. That's approach. Does that not make sense to you? You know, right? We're, we're sitting here saying, well, we're, we're not certain what comes in it. We're writing a bylaw here or something that we're going to ask people to follow. We don't know what we're asking.
I think that makes sense. We'll try to get some data in some.
Randy Brown.
Randy Brown. For the next, we just sort of put it in context.
Right. I mean, we can, we can ask for anything we want in here, but that's not something that an engineering firm is going to do. What is the self with planning? We're thinking, asking us for this. This is not something we do.
Something like this is not going to be happening as much, but nobody's going to be coming.
That is another discussion, Mr. Sir. One more.
That's okay. So further discussion.
Yeah, I'm just reading through to just to see if there's anything. I don't know what failing intersections means. Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Is there a reference? Is there something standard that was supposed to reference?
Yes, it was in the carbana one.
No, no, but that's a failing. I don't.
Isn't that there's a, there's an intersection rating system. Didn't we see that of the A, B, C, D average? So for us is D failing, is F failing with exactly an intersection that is a rated or lower needs to be identified.
For Doug Street.
With the rating system. Identified by the rating system. And that's a rating system. That's a rating system grade that will be generated by a traffic impact study done by the average local engineering.
You asked me hello. Yeah, 2D should be thought about. I could say, see just saying intersections that would experience an increase in traffic as a result of project. That would be useful, helpful to us that may qualify, they warn a traffic light or but you know, turn lanes or something.
Every single intersection next to a project is going to experience an increase in traffic because of the project, like almost by definition, right? Unless they're all going one direction, the opposite direction, but I mean, just by adding something, you've got, you have one car that increases the traffic. Has to be some threshold that that has to meet to. I don't know. We, we can look more into that grading as well, you know. Any other comments, questions, public or board or otherwise on traffic impacts before I move down to the next section? See a hand raised and that is Sage. Sage, go ahead.
Hey, I'm, I'm just wondering, should we?
Name and address it for the record.
Oh, sorry. Sage Fury, 91 Granville Road, Southwick. I'm just wondering, could we possibly include something like for seasons, like a seasonal as well in this? Like, because we do have obviously winter and our roads ice over pretty easily in town, especially during project zones when they're moving dirt around the roads and everything. And then you got the water moisture building up on that and makes slicks. So is there any way to do a project's traffic study including the winter time? Would that make it complicated or?
You know, I think, so I would say this.
Two days versus Thursday.
No, I would say this. I'm not sure. I'm not sure winter versus other is workable for a couple of reasons, but I think the one that jumps to mind is just because if someone puts in you know, an application in April, they shouldn't have to wait that long and there'd be issues with timeframes of handling something as well, depending on what the project was. So I think that's an issue, but I do think that there's a point to be had there, which is, you know, we saw this with I forget where, but I don't know, but right, I mean, there's going to be different certain things you may need to factor in such as summer versus school year or, you know, I mean, there's probably other things that aren't going to be a huge difference in timeframe, but will would, you know, may have a pretty decent impact on what the traffic is going to be. You know, don't do it necessarily on Fourth of July weekend versus, you know, some, you know, some other time.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, I think there is something to be played in to that. I have in my draft that peak hour that we talked about before. And maybe that gets tweaked a little bit to talk about the timeframe too. You know, and it, I mean, you know, it's probably project dependent, right?
It's. Yeah.
Depending on where the project is and what the project is, that may be a little bit more pushed to get a traffic study done at a certain time of year versus, versus, you know, not worrying about what kind of year is done. Right? I mean, if you're doing a project right on 57 or, you know, some, somewhere around there by the school, you, you know, you probably want a traffic study. It's when the school's open. So to get a sense of what the impact's going to be on that. Traffic there. All right. Any other questions or comments? Before we move on to the next section? Okay. All right. The impacts to municipal town utilities and services. One is the water supply. Anybody have any comments or questions or suggestions related to section one, the water supply?
I'm sure there's only town water.
I'm trying to think of a scenario where it'd be otherwise acceptable, no well. I think we should choose to go.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I.
I'll just kind of propose public one. Wouldn't care if they wanted to sink a well and pull a million gallons a day out of a.
I mean, the thing is you do, right? I mean, that's, it's. No, but it's, it's. You know, you put it in a well, you're literally taking the same water that's like, you know.
It's a quality order, so we know.
It should be, but I mean, you know, there is a, there's an impact on the aquifer. It's not on the services of the town necessarily, obviously, because it's a private well, but it's an impact on the, right, on the aquifer.
How far do, how far down do we actually own?
That's as well.
Well, if we only, if we, if we.
That's a lawyer question.
How much, how far down do we actually own?
I don't know. My neighborhood, you gotta go down like 600 feet to get the.
Do you own that property down there?
Yeah. And they're putting in wells, so I.
Who owns the aquifer?
It has 750. It's George Barren territory. Not down that.
Yeah.
You, yeah.
There is.
In the air too.
Actually, when I was a kid, I was playing field day where you're.
So we should split this between private and public water supply.
Well, the first one kind of, the first one identifies what is it going to be? And then B is evaluate the capacity if, if that's necessary.
I was going to say, probably the first word should be if applicable.
That handles the private part.
I think so. Because B is the only one that really is talking about the. Your impact on the town water service.
But look back at the heading. Do we have to adjust the heading of B? And just. Say impacts. Yeah, I mean, I. Yeah, delete municipal and town. Well, town in the broadest sense then, public and private. Because the first one is general enough that it can handle somebody that wants to drill wells.
If you have a large project though, and you drill, I'm coming, and you're taking out a ton of water out of the aquifer, I think that's. At least identified.
You have to get a state permit for water removal. If it goes over a certain threshold.
And that's fair, but I mean, and it should be something that's identified to us in some way so that we know what we're talking about and if, you know, we need to quit.
And this applies down to number four two for solid basis, possibly. A smaller project may not necessarily connect to the sewer. So you just need a different heading.
Services and resources. That work? Any questions or comments or suggested changes to the water supply?
Brown or something like that looked at these and said, yeah, that's the kind of information I like to see when I do my evaluation.
I don't know the answer to that at the moment, but we will check. But I mean, I think this is going to another meeting anyways, and so we'll run it by. You know, Randy and probably others for anything that says consultation required. I want to make sure and sign off on it before we put it out there anyways.
I remind everybody that this comes before they even file the application or any permits.
Yes. That's true. I don't think that's true at all. I just don't. I mean, I, you know, but that's fine. Me to a large degree, like, let's look at this one, right? I mean, this one right here. How is that different than what you're doing now on a large project? You're telling us, are you getting the water? You're telling us how many gallons are used and, I mean, that's pretty basic information, I think. I don't think that that should really scare people off from having to. Look for a project in Salt Lake if they like. Not sure sure why we care about the cost and.
You mean C?
I think that would, well. Costs the town maybe to, but I couldn't care less if it costs them dollars to. Do whatever they gotta do, clump the place or whatever. They don't ask them what the cost of the overall project is, I think. It may come up, right? Because that would be what you would use for. Tax basis. But still, we care how much. I don't understand what information we'd be trying to. Base our decision, what part of our decision is based on that information? Yeah, I, I am. I understand what you mean by the beginning. I mean, I think my, when I read it. And the cost probably doesn't matter. But I would want to know how they're, I, you know, I'd want to know what they're proposing for. They're going to construct and how they're going to maintain it, so that there's not some. You know, whether it's a ton of wells or whether it's hooking something up with a, you know, pretty significant system that is going to not be maintained and cause an issue. I would want to know that. If it's, if, if water uses is going to be an issue for the project. I think at least providing some basic details about how you're going to propose to do it is, is useful. But I, you know, you're right. I mean, it's a question of how you write that. In that.
Does it ever become a town's responsibility to maintain?
There's always a stopping point where the town maintains its lines and, yeah, I mean, if it's connected to the town water. My understanding is that.
Cost of the ongoing maintenance if it might fall to the town at some point?
No, I just want to know that there's a plan in place so that there's not going to be, especially if it's, I mean, there's two things. One is. You're, you're dealing with groundwater and you want to make sure that there's going to be no issues that are going to impact the groundwater. So that would be A. And that B, if it's connected to the town system, I'd want to make sure that there's going to be no potential disruptions to the town system that we'd have to think about. And, and, you know, at least that's being presented to the DPW early on, so they consider offer their opinion about whether it's a realistic. Reasonable project, you know? Again, I don't, I'm not sure that that's. If you need X amount of water to run your business there. You should have a plan in place as to how you're getting it before you start signing contracts and doing whatever. So I, I don't think that that's a big ask.
I don't think it's a big ask either, but.
Well, is it estimate the value?
I think if you wanted to estimate the any, any cost to the town. Actually, you could probably just put it into A, right? And just keep going on A. Just take off. And then just keep going. And plans for construction of improvements and maintenance. I mean, is that what you're thinking? Let me just delete this. Again, we'll run these by. People who know what they're talking about. So we'll have Randy take the. But we also got someone who knows a few things about. Somebody using the DPW sitting right here.
If we ever get to storm water.
Two is sewage, just, let me, anybody else on, on water before I move on? Sorry.
We soaked that one already.
You've been waiting, you've been waiting on that. That was just the setup. All right, sewage disposal. Anybody have any questions or comments or suggestions on number two sewage disposal?
Kind of the same comment before, D has the same.
Yeah, so I'll.
There's a thing of this to this section that talks about. At least the way I'm reading it is. Public system. So what happens if somebody has onsite system? Is there anything we want to know from them about that? So you wouldn't include anything as far as a private system?
I think yes, but I think it'd be under environmental impacts, maybe.
So this section, by the way, this section is written, it's public.
No, I mean, I think A, well, you have to describe it if it's private and you, you give a sense of what it's going to be. And, you know, it gives the opportunity for.
Discharges to the municipal sewer system.
Right. But that's, so describe the proposed. Including average daily inherent. I'm just going to keep writing this.
You got a span.
So I mean, I think A gives you sort of the basics of what is being proposed. It gives DPW the option to take a quick look at it early on and see whether it's a realistic plan and can offer some. Suggestion on that. And, you know, I mean, the other part about this, you know, keep in mind.
I put an and before discharges. And discharges to the municipal system if applicable. So you get the private and then the public impact on the public. Right after peak, second line, right after peak wastewater and discharges. To the municipal system.
Peak is the descriptor. What is being changed? You read that as including average daily wastewater discharges and average.
Peak wastewater either to their own system or to the municipal system. So if you put an and after wastewater.
Why don't we just take out municipal? Fine with me. And I can't use it. All right. So I mean, that again.
Okay, so you get private and public. So we're going to learn about both. I know it flows at three miles an hour.
Does DEP need to be consulted on this?
How about border health?
If that. I don't know if state is DP.
NEPA thresholds. Being tripped. In similar fashion as the.
But they would be tripped because of.
Extensions of the sewer vein.
Yeah, I mean, my inclination is to keep this local. And so they're going to have to deal with me, with DP for NEPA anyways. I mean. I think border health makes sense.
Instead of the state.
The line number two sewage or septic. Right there in that heading.
Say that again, Diane.
In line two, sewage disposal, you can put in private or public or sewage accepted or whatever, right there.
Why does sewage?
Marcus's concerns about the private versus.
Is sewage disposal only describe? No, that's just that. Item being disposed of, it's not, that doesn't define it one way or the other.
Yeah, I think we fixed A up enough to where it's both private and public.
All right. Any other comments, questions, anything on sewage disposal? Three, storm water.
Do we need to put in a, a specific reference? By law, you know, such and such. For those regulations. Or current, we have a, see the current. Department of Public Works.
Chapter one, yeah, it's whatever. There is a chapter assigned to it. It's just a regulation.
And it may change, but chapter one eighty-three will always be there.
Isn't it the stormwater regulations handbook or something like that?
There is a, it's, the regulations get put into the bylaws. Like three fifteen, right? It's, it's technically right.
Yeah, it's a regulation.
So it gets put into, it has a chapter assigned to it. I just can't remember what they want. It's one eighty-three.
Mister Goddard knows that.
See Department of Public Works. Are B, see things that would normally be included in a stormwater management plan? Wow, are we being redundant by? What, does it, does it matter? No, but. I mean, I suppose that, that covers in case the regulations. I can't ima, I mean, those have got to be in there.
I do have a question from the audience.
Oh, I see. I thought you might.
B and C are required in a special permit application, but A wouldn't necessarily be. So if you're requiring A, you're going to get, it'd almost be today's point, it'd be included. Your pre and post, your post has to be better or equal to your pre by definition under the bylaw.
Yeah, no, no, I think we're taking those out. I mean, I think it's. They just are modern management planners.
So my, my question is, is A required because the development bylaw parcel size already puts you in the threshold of requiring? An SMP or you're, you're mandating that now as part of this? Because if, what if, so that's my question, I, because I don't know the answer. If, if the parcel was small enough, that wouldn't trigger the, an SMP, now you're triggering it to require a year.
It would be.
This handbook only gets used if there's a FMP required.
I mean, I really can't.
I get it. It's, but that's what I, when I was reading it, I'm thinking, I don't know that you could have a. Bylaw changed so many times and I, I didn't read it this week, so I don't remember. So I don't remember what, there, there was a minimum size or a size of a parcel that triggers this and a size of a building. I think you probably would require an SMP anyway, just by the size of the parcel.
I can't imagine you would get it right.
And B and C is absolutely redundant. But if. It would be a little bit more precarious if it, if the parcel didn't require an SMP and now the. The handbook is requiring it. Then you, then B and C would be relevant, but it was part of special permit application anyway. It's like you want to have it for your. Pre comprehensive impact study.
Yeah, so we'll.
And if it's determined not necessary by the town planner, it will not be necessary. So it's not absolutely required.
It was.
Well, let's go through, we'll go through and think about the next time that triggers to that and just make sure that it's. I mean, I'm presuming, but maybe we should be more explicit that if one is not required for the project, that it's not gonna be required. That it would be, you know, presumably waived by a town planner here, but maybe you can make that more explicit. But let me, let's just look at it in more detail as to when that's triggered. And. Oh, yeah, let's look at that in more detail for the next. Alright, anything else with stormwater? Okay, anybody on the line? No, no. Alright, solid waste disposal. Anybody have any questions or comments on solid waste disposal?
Diane has a.
No.
Suggested insert.
Oh, is that on your, I'm sorry.
C four. We're on B C, right, just says four.
On B four.
Oh, we're on B four. Oh. Never mind.
Alright.
Solid waste.
Alright, any, anybody?
No, nothing.
Alright.
Only thing would be. This is a good point. This whole piece was a good point, because I don't think it's really gotten its fair shrift over time on this. Is if, how does this impact? A. Because if there is significant material coming off the site at certain times. That could be impactful to A. So this doesn't address that at all. Describe the quantity and composition of solid waste. And volume and cubic yards of refuse generated, but if it's leaving, it could be impactful to A. Traffic in general.
Capital A.
Capital A. Just forgot to tie that in. You know, with a previous project, there was a concern about materials coming in and materials coming out. If there's other. Solid waste or other traffic. So let's say it was a product that had a lot of byproduct, that we take stuff out.
It would be us too, when receiving that traffic impact study to say this includes the exorbitant amount of trucks you should be.
I guess.
Getting rid of your solid waste with.
That's right.
Maybe if you time it, or you could discuss it and time it. Off peak, out of, or out of, out of hours.
Yeah, but at least brings it into the discussion.
Yeah, no, this is good. I don't think I've ever seen that really discussed as part of the overall process.
Any other questions or comments on solid waste disposal? Okay. Emergency services. Any questions, comments, suggestions for emergency services?
Well said.
Onset fire suppression.
That's a hundred better. Alright, anybody last chance comments, questions? Emergency services. C. Environmental impacts. Any questions, comments, suggestions on environmental impact?
My suggestion is just to insert.
No, no, I, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was the only one I was trying to figure out how you. I think that makes sense, I'm not sure. The right federal agencies in there, but I think that makes sense to define, like we talked about before with. Things we're talking about before, defining what it is.
We have to write out those agencies.
No.
Occupational safety and health administration. Environmental protection agency. For those in the. That don't use.
Occupational. Safety.
And health. Administration.
Is the occupational safety hazard.
Or say, okay, ocean.
Yeah, but what, what is occupational safety?
Safety.
Whoa. There's Alexa. Suri, thank you, Suri. Whoever you are.
Unfortunately, I knew the answer to that question.
You cover air.
You gotta be a little bit more specific on that.
Are they gonna breathe it, exhale it? Impact of bad breath. You got everything covered. Even a box through.
Hi, this is Marisa Kukobergon, can I, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, Marisa Kukobergon, 126 South Loomis Street. Just, I'm wondering if in subsection two of this area where it says identify and evaluate the potential impacts. Of the project on air quality, surface water, if there can be something inserted there about light pollution as well specifically. Or maybe it's a different section, but to me, I think of light pollution as kind of being part and parcel of. Environmental measures of, you know, such as air quality, surface water.
Makes sense to me. Yeah, we got noise levels onsite and offsite. So certainly.
Actually, we got put that.
Noise and light levels. On site and off site.
Thank you.
We do always kind of require the lights.
That's the whole point of this.
Are down. There's a whole dark skies program, right, John? There's probably some good language in there.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a note.
Any other? Questions, comments, suggestions on the environmental impact section? Yes. Right here?
Yes.
That's two, I think it's just the. It's just justified. Issue. With big words.
Who's the Southwood Emergency Management Director?
Charlie Dunlop.
Okay, so it's a completely separate from police and fire, right?
Yeah.
Charles.
Is that the proper ask though?
I just, it's, I'm quite wondering, because we, we included it here, but not under section five, which is emergency services. Southwood Emergency Management Director, but not in the section private.
He deals mainly with disasters.
Hazers.
Disasters. Floods.
In response.
Tosses and materials.
I'm just asking if that's the right person to engage for that. Probably a good question to ask himself.
Yeah, I think on all of these, at least I have circled. To take this and run it by the person being required to be consulted and make sure. Just the sign stuff. If you don't show up, you get assigned.
That's how it works a lot of the time.
Alright.
Should that person be part of section C and, and or? Consultation with police and fire department.
Fire department, she does most of the pre-planned work. And they would be the first responders, emergency management is not that.
Right, and they're not necessarily site specific.
That's why I kind of a big question asked. Fire chief and the emergency management director.
Alright, well, we can look at what, Jessica, what was that section before, five?
It's, well, we're talking about impacts. In sections of B. B five, the consultation with police and fire departments is required, should the Southwood Emergency Management Director be incorporated there? Question mark, and or should they be included in C four?
We can make a note about both of those. By there, even though it's not in there.
Should it be?
Well, but they're, they're not, you know, I mean, the emergency services to me. It's probably more fire and police type of deal. The hazardous waste probably has a bigger impact and may involve an emergency management. Response, so, but that's, we're just gonna have to figure out what. What the emergency management director does.
I told you. Deals with significant disasters.
I mean, if it's a major project and there's a big fire and there's a lot of traffic, emergency management is gonna be called to get it there, yeah.
Floods, windstorms. When we lost power for a week.
But I mean, he could just be the guy that sets up the plan and that is then executed by fire and police and he has absolutely nothing to do with it, he may never, ever be called on that. If he had a head.
Well, we're gonna talk. Okay, we're, we're in number four. We got through it. We're under D.
I'm sorry, guys, I had my hand raised.
Go ahead.
Sorry, hi. Marisa Kukobergon again, 126 South Loomis. I'm wondering if this fits in at all within this section or in any one of these subsections or if it's potentially a number five. But I'm thinking about life cycle assessment for. Materials and operation components as needed. It may not be required in all instances, but what comes to mind is with the solar field, I remember a few months back. There was a question about the battery and the storage and kind of the long term. Life cycle assessment on that, whether there would be potential of leaking of, you know, chemicals from the batteries at some point. And I don't think it's necessary for everything, but it could just be something to ask for if, if it's relevant. And I think any company worth its weight can provide a life cycle assessment at this point, it's pretty standard across all industries.
Does that, does that fall under two right now?
Um. That's what I was wondering, but a life cycle assessment, I feel, is a little bit separate because it gives you the information earlier on in terms of kind of. One given piece of equipment or an operational component. Say if its lifespan is 30 years, it's not information that is always provided upfront, that's why sometimes I know for my work. In the textile field, we'll ask for a life cycle assessment of certain materials, especially newer materials, because they might be okay now, but they may degrade in certain ways. In 10, 15 years down the road that we wouldn't even think about, and that's why we ask for that assessment, it kind of brings up things that. Initially, you know, might pass just fine, but it might off gas, it might degrade in a way that. No one who's on the planning board right now may, may see, you know, it might be something 50, 60 years down the line.
Take that personal, I plan on living forever.
Well, then you can be the evaluator, I guess, for that.
We do provide for decommissioning on some of the equipment and so forth, but that's a good, good item, I, I'd say reasonable to include it. Thoughts?
I can write it if applicable.
I think it's an if applicable.
That is Mike's word of the day. If applicable.
Exactly, if applicable.
And.
Require life cycle. So you're, it's inserting in item C two.
Life cycle.
Makes sense, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody?
He was putting in my sugar recipe.
Comments, questions, or suggestions on the environmental impact section?
Oh, come on, I'm going down, you're coming up. You know, John, we don't do that.
Community impacts.
On the D one, I would make it. Describe the scenic. Rather than just start, it doesn't say what to do with it.
Correct.
How's the English there?
Well, we, but we did this on everyone, so you're now.
What?
No.
No.
So when C one says describe.
Evaluate, describe, identify, describe.
Describe the.
Describe the scenic, unique, geological, historical, archaeological.
This handbook sets forth the information an applicant must include in a copy of the impact. Supposed to be just.
List.
Lists of information.
Or you just add the word list there. One.
List. There you go. Better than applicable. Small word.
All right. Don't you want to describe it, not just list it? We use described twice before under C.
Not getting paid by the word. Whoops.
Not all of us, we are.
B one A, water supply. Describe the proposed water supply. Section four, describe the quantity and composition. Describe the anticipated.
No, we certainly did it, but we just didn't do it on every section. We mean, it's, it's.
Right, but if you read D one, does it make any sense to you?
They're all starting with verbs.
Yeah.
They're all starting with verbs.
Yeah, but this one just not.
It's turning into a master plan committee meeting right here.
You're arguing with me about dramatic. Let's move on.
Well, maybe get Dory on the phone.
There you are.
In the bylaw under application information of fire departments, we are asking for subject property and property superimposed on an aerial image including abiding properties. Would it be beneficial to have that here indicating where those unique or historical or scenic areas are? Clarify.
Describe and locate. Does that work?
Is there, is there a?
Yeah. Yeah, describe and locate.
Or display.
Describe and provide to buy aerial images.
How about you, Google Earth?
In the Mississippi.
Trying to identify the location. And I'm you know, I'm going to leave that a little bit open only because the aerial view was meant to be have a be a little bit clean so that you can kind of see everything if they want to do it on a separate one. But, you know, presumably you can take the two things and sort of put them together. All right, anything else on community impacts? All right, fiscal impacts.
Did anybody want to like?
No, no. Fiscal impacts. I mean, we'll go through it. Make all these sections. It's just with, you know, describe or whatever. If applicable, we can do that for the next meeting. All right, let's see.
The promises of the politician.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or suggestions on? This one.
I have six and seven suggested.
Yeah. Four and five are kind of saying very similar things, but worded very differently. Is somebody really going to be able to tell the projected financial impact on existing jobs? I understand where they might have the impact, the number of types, maybe. But they're going to be able to say, yeah, everybody around here is going to have to pay everybody two thousand or more.
Yes, I have seen that in those studies. In the fiscal studies.
You've seen it?
In a number of ones.
As it's readily. Yeah, I mean, in my mind, I think it's a useful thing to have in there to not apply in probably most circumstances, but there's going to be cases where say they wanted to put, you know, probably a poor example, but if they want to put in a Home Depot, right? Like, you know, we should probably think about how that's going to impact. You know, IDS or, you know, the, the community type things. I mean, you know, so I mean, I think that that, again, probably bad analogy, but, but that's the kind of thing that I'm thinking of with that. With that. Number five there. I, but I don't think it's going to come up in probably most projects unless there's something that really could really impact some of the smaller businesses in town. But I think it may be useful to have something like that that you could play, sort of get something for a bigger business coming in. How that's going to impact existing small businesses in that same field.
Two things. One is turn that on its head. And these impacts can also be positive. Right, so someone could come in and you know, pick, pick a fictitional business that is going to drive people to the restaurants and shops and draw other planets orbiting the sun, insurance companies. Like when you talk about a place that has a significant presence, right? There usually are planets orbiting that sun that rely on that business to exist. So I, I read this thing a few times while we were waiting for the other thing. And, and I, I looked at this as I'm a glass hat full guy and said, well, a lot of these are some of the costs and stuff are, you know, good to delineate, but there's others where they may be economically beneficial to the town itself. So, and then my second point was, I think in one someone should reach out again to the chair of the finance committee because I don't believe that it's within the charter under the bylaw of, I think it's of the finance committee. Finance committee's job is to budget and to review articles of the town meeting warrant, of which the budget is one. So unless this is going to directly generate a warrant article, I don't know how the finance committee would like. So just, just like the same question with the emergency management director, probably a reach, a reach out to them to see how they would like to be approached for something like that.
Fair. Finance committee always jumps on us when we don't include them.
Again, that's why I said probably best to reach out to them and ask because I'm not going to speak for them. But I, I read the bylaw under the town code for chapter twenty three and they're, they're they, they like to be consulted because there may be impacts on the budget, but under the, under the bylaw.
Right, I don't disagree with it.
But don't they provide the data to the person seeking it? I'm sorry. Aren't they the ones who are going to provide the data to the people seeking it?
The finance committee? I think this would be more of an expense. The way I read this one is project costs arising from increased demand and required improvements. I think that DPW or someone is going to say, okay, we need to increase a water line by three inches or whatever, or six hundred feet. And then it's going to cost two million dollars. I'm just making it up, right? And you, so then that would be impactful on the water budget. And if the, if the, if the applicant is going to say, okay, we, we, we'll pay for that two million dollar improvement. There's no impact on the warrant article for the budget in that year because it's, it's payable. As a, for instance.
I mean, the one thing that may be included in this, police and fire may be included in one. You know, it could arguably be enough for the impact of those public services that, that you could include them, but, you know, we can think about that, too. I think it's primarily going to be deep enough.
Yeah, I do, too.
All right, anything else on this final section?
Two additional.
Yeah, so you have in the packet, I believe, two additions, six and seven. So first one being financial ability to complete the project. Second one being sustain the project for about ten years.
I've talked to economic development commission in other towns. I've seen other fiscal reports on this. And these are very customary. Some won't enter to your project unless that's submitted. And I'm not talking about you.
We might, well, any, any thoughts or comments or questions on that? I, I need to think about this more.
Yeah.
To, you can put anything in front of us and what does that mean to us? And at what level is it, oh, yeah, you've got plenty of money or, or no, you don't have that money. Or, okay, you have a good two-year plan or whatever, but I don't know about your ten-year plan.
Oh, shit, you plan for five years, but the economy crapped out too.
I'm just, I I don't know what information is going to be provided by this that's going to be evidentiary, evident that's, that's going to make me change my mind or, I don't know, like. I mean, it very well may be included and just curious as to what.
You would have the economic development commission review that. You wouldn't have to make the financial analysis. Higher value planning commission could evaluate that.
I think you're putting way too much stock in the world, the economic development board, but.
Because that's not their role today. Or they haven't been asked to, does it mean they shouldn't be?
Wouldn't.
Finance committee could have.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's within. All right, well, let me, we'll just, we'll put a pin in that one for right now and, and come back to it and discuss it. I don't know. I mean, I, well, you don't have to, but I at least have to think through it. I just need to.
You don't forget, they've already done a five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year plan themselves. Bringing this project forward.
Yeah, all right. Anything else on the fiscal impacts? Well, let's, John, if you just want to send that along with the request that they look at the proposed role of each department in here. And offer their thoughts or suggestions about whether it's appropriate or not. I would also ask specifically Southwood Management or Emergency Management. The one that they're not in. But just generally, I would also just ask all of the departments that you're sending around if there's ones that they see that they should be consulted on. All right. Right on plenty more time. And I feel up here a August.
You want to continue it?
Yeah, do I hear a motion to continue this public hearing? Seven, ten P M on August sixteenth.
Marcus Phelps, I'll move.
Right here a second.
Two second. Marcus Phelps, hi.
David Sutton, hi.
Dave, can I? Seven forty-five and plenty more time.
Yeah.
One fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue, continue public hearing.
Make the decision. No.
But you can provide an update and we can.
Just prior to the last meeting. Mr. Hale provided, Randy and I have some narrative information about the project and this morning a number of figures. Randy and I have initiated our review of the study from material. I have some concerns about a potential change in direction. So we've asked Mr. Hale to meet with us in person so we can clearly chart a path towards completing the permitting process. So we got to look for continuance to September. I'm optimistic that we'll be done with this by September. Oh, no, Doug.
And then I put that in, right?
To continue, I want to keep this on shortly, so we'll at least check in back and sort of pushing them to move it forward.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing on one fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue to seven forty-five P M on August sixteen.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Right here a second.
For a second.
We'll do a roll call vote, Michael Dory.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton.
Dave, can I?
It's been a while. Since you were on the board.
No, but that's a disaster waiting to happen over there.
Yeah. Yes. All right. Discussions. Earth estimation special permit.
Nothing to stop Sharon Micah. We've got Tom Saunders on.
Oh, 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 discussion. Joe Khan.
That's the flying print section.
Yeah, no.
Do you have a copy of letter? I feel like everyone has thrown away the, a little bit, I will see, have a share of time.
I just got lucky.
I just got lucky. I appreciate that. At the bag.
All right. So John, you want to just give us a?
Oh, I'm going to tag Tom for this, but the, just as that's, uh, he has submitted a letter suggesting several condition amendments. Uh, that relate to the Tilkon renewal that was issued last summer or fall, I should say. Um, and it did run. These proposals passed. Town council, that is chiming in at the corporate moment. But Tom, why don't you take it away and let us know where we are?
Sure, um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, um, so. Way, way back, even before we submitted our permit application for the solar site, we had an informal discussion, I think. With you, John, and, and we had, or the, you kind of relayed this to town council and they wrote us a letter saying, okay. In order to do this, here are the conditions and, excuse me, I'm recovering from COVID. Which is why I'm not out there in person.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, so they, town council wrote a letter that I think I included, John, in the email to you that just spelled out the conditions in Tilkon's ex- earth excavation permit that. We need to be amended in order for both permits to kind of jive together. And so this is basically our proposal for what we would amend those to and. I'm guessing that in order to actually amend that permit, there would need to be a public hearing, we need to advertise, but we wanted to just get this in front of you and, and just talk about how we want to go about that. So we just went ahead and proposed some language. That was drafted by, or was truly interviewed by our, our attorney. Which hopefully stays narrow enough to not disturb anything in that existing permit, but, but clears the way sort of. Regulatory for the, uh, for the solar field.
And so the. Comments uh, that came back from town council, oh, I think are pretty easily digested for the, each of those suggested items. I just want to make sure that we include. The electrical infrastructure that traverses a portion of the site and the portion of the access road. That. That links up the solar parcel to Hudson Drive.
Okay, um.
Open something else, excuse me. So much for getting that done. Uh, but yes, I'm sorry, so she says, where, where you're making reference to the solar array and battery storage system. We want to make sure that we tag on some of those infrastructure elements that connect. The solar array across the earth excavation site to Hudson Drive as short as those distances may be.
Okay, so something to the effect of. Uh, the. I mean, basically, these all say pretty much the same thing, with the exception of the, the solar array adds some kind of language that says, and the electrical infrastructure connecting it to the resource distribution system.
Electrical and, and if you will, the access drive.
Okay.
Those pretense right there.
True.
For the board's consideration. As we. Do grind through that amended decision on this prospective hearing, we will be looking at making sure that. That any. Exploration beyond the installation activity for the solar arrays excluded from that twenty-four or so acres. Which I think is apparent to us, but town council. Want to make sure that was at least put into the language of the decision as well.
All right, sorry. So say that again, John, it's.
It's, this is more of a planning board action item, but that earth excavation permit right now applies to the entirety of the parcel. Uh, I think we all understand that that area has been. Almost excavated, but that portion is no longer subject to excavation activity, but we want to make sure that in our amended earth excavation permit, we are excluding that the acreage. That's going to be occupied by the solar array.
Sure, makes sense.
If I can just mention this, I don't know how deep and frequently interaction is between close Jensen Miller. And Tilkon, uh, but. Randy Brown, the DPW director and I spoke with Tilkon just a short while ago regarding connector projects. Between Sam Westroad and Hudson Drive. Part of that early discussion that you referenced. Your opening comments had to do with updating the reuse plan. So there are some materials that I think are on the cusp of being available.
Okay.
Final drafts are being circulated for comments right now. So we'll make sure that as soon as that's available, we'll share that with you and. Tilkon and close Jensen Miller for that component.
Sure, yeah, we have a pretty close relationship with both CJM and Tilkon have cell phone, all those guys, so.
Great. That's it. This is just the initial step to make sure we get the ball for that, they're getting the ball rolling.
Yeah. And John, I, I think you and I should talk about how you want this application actually to come into you. Obviously, I think Tilkon and CJM would have to sign it, but. It may ultimately be me representing it. That depends on what we decide, but um. Let's just. Talk about that offline.
Not a problem.
We wrap this up. Any questions or comments or anything on the board? Everybody have anything? Else about this discussion, public comments? All right. That is all set.
Have a good night.
All right.
It may have made its way down from Jessica.
That was my answer.
The person responsible for it, obviously, doesn't need to be you. Decisions. Will be.
That's the prefer to. I will be writing two decisions for the. Wally Way and Hudson Drive. Project as.
All right, so we'll put those continuous decisions on for the August meeting. August. Which will wrap up all the decisions, right, and other than. That, uh. We're sure.
Oh, one.
Uh, and obviously the stated, uh, and it's a public, but that's not a decision. Okay. So that's not bad, we're pretty young. Southwick DPW parking lot design guidelines of lid barriers. Fifty's MS four permit component. Everyone's.
Well, I can start by saying, I'm not sure if the industry has adopted. Some lip or low impact, because I mean, we always say L I P. Yeah. That's okay.
At that point in the meeting, we're on misspeaking.
It's only thirty-three pages.
Only, uh, but in a, in a tabular format.
Oh. Maybe you should have sent the memo back.
Was.
You did.
I did, as a matter of fact.
Some of us looked at it.
Everybody, uh, to Ranger. We can always burn out.
The two copies have been disposseded.
Suffice.
Save me a lot of ink.
We are picking up on the discussion from the last meeting, uh, where Fasam Neel worked in conjunction with DPW to look at. The existing guidelines and barriers to low impact development. As evidenced through our. And subdivision regulations. So the fruit coming out of that effort ends up being a list of recommendations and under the. It is a storm of affirmative Massachusetts. We have to take action on those recommendations. Um, and so as alluded to in the last meeting. Part of our task, perhaps working for the summer, will be to look more closely at. Where low impact development can be accommodated into primarily our subdivision regulators. Where we can look at identifying required widths of right of way and roadways, parking dimensions and so on and so forth. Recognize that has just been released, this is a, we'll call it a ninety-five percent draft a few, three days ago, but I want to welcome everyone to take a walk through. So you can see what the targets are for optimal performance. E P A size or industry size, uh, where our regulations fall into that spectrum and the recommended action. To try to align those two, two columns.
Are they saying that we need to follow, fall into their parameters?
What we need to do is explore. Those opportunities. Some measures I am confident will need to be implemented. But the idea is that we need to figure out which ones work for Southwick.
So Big Brother sounds like we do.
Big Brother's always talking about. So anyway, there's going to be coordination at this table here with police and fire in both from DPW as well. And perhaps beyond.
But it's done to the blanket, you have to incorporate everything they say, it's, you can evaluate them.
No, I think, I think there's a fair amount of conditional language on that page thirty-one.
Yeah.
Uh, if you will, so the recommendations are to evaluate. But that's, I don't think we have that degree of flexibility with each other.
Yeah, we can work.
Well, I get.
So it's all or nothing?
Many shades. This is not a zero sum. But given that, uh, we don't have a great period of time, have it in your hands, we can move that discussion. Further to August.
Meeting, everybody take a look through. This report and we'll go from there. Okay. Greens West subdivision posting is a podium lot release from cover.
We are holding that on our business list. Awaiting the primary of the posting security. We've already made our motions, I think we're ready to take action, but that's pretty has not been.
Bridge T house.
So I. Met with Mr. Robinski just shortly before. The last training board meeting. I wanted to have some time to digest. Uh, the information I gathered. In the two thousand nineteen permit. There's language in the commission saying that you submit a cycle. What has happened since? I think we're aware, he, he discussed that he's constructed some outbuildings. Which won't be plumbed, but have electrical service and his idea is to have small gatherings within these three outbuildings. Rear yard of this. Restaurant. The initial. Brush and thought that I had when, when looking at the site, uh, the restaurant, some of the improvements, um, all. You know, generally positive, uh, in nature, but there's only so many parking spaces that that lot can accommodate. On a. Informal basis, I seldom see it near capacity, but I can appreciate bringing in. Specific groups or functions for those, those buildings, we might be pushing the envelope. Just a few short weeks ago, uh, Art had some spaces informally stripped out there. I think the idea was to try to get some idea of definition. I wouldn't say it was laid out. You know, string and, uh, the rulers according to zone. Uh, I did a quick count out there and. Let's see, uh, less than fifty. Spaces essentially is what I was able to identify. Let's just say fifty to fifty-five for the sake of a range. Look at the restaurant posted capacity. Need to clarify with the building department if the deck figure is included, uh, but ninety-three patrons is what's posted. I wouldn't there. We've got two different sized outbuildings, two smaller, uh, at twenty people maximum, uh, is what is estimated, and then twenty-five or so, uh, at the. Slightly larger outbuilding. Uh, so if I put together some. Rough map to that, it gives me about a hundred and fifty-eight people occupants. Uh, out there. Forty, gosh, I'm not going to try and go through my. This is some quick math, everybody. One. Sixty-two. Sixty, okay, that's right, sixty-three, good. Um, plus roughly eleven employees, seventy-four required spaces out there. So we are towing into all the threshold, um, if we're looking at eighty percent, you know, accommodation, if that's appropriate and so on and so forth.
I can't imagine we have nothing. Higher.
The description that Mr. Benson's was providing has as a light touch. There's a. Idea floating around there, I think actually spurred this conversation, whether or not the. Alcohol beverage license is extended to apply to those outbuildings, and that certainly has the potential.
Good shit over here. Yeah. They're not trailers, right?
There are no axes. Involved.
Well, I mean, I think it applies just like any, like, we just spent going over the marina, right? I mean, he's got X amount of spots. If he wants to do an event with X amount of people. He can do less people in that he, he's going to have to do less people inside. I mean, it's just, it's going to be a fluctuating. It's going to be, he's going to have a capacity number that's based on the parking and whether he's. Using more inside or outside is going to be. But it's going to, you know, obviously during the summer. That figure out and make sure that.
Well, he said that those are going to be heated though, potentially too, so those that could be used. If you're typically throughout the year.
No, true, I suspect there'll be less people.
Quiet, surrounded by woods, snow.
I, you know, do we have any paperwork? Do we have any permit on this at all? Is there anything?
We just have the special permit that was put in place to. Continue the non-performing use.
Well, we have a special permit. Did we discuss parking?
We had a special permit because it was out. They didn't use it for, you know, years, right? We ended up having to do it.
No numbers, no calculation in that.
Very, I, I have a file right there, there's a few diagrams, I think that perhaps, uh, Mr. Schlesler was brainstorming.
He had plenty of parking at the time. Internal.
Sure, at that point in time, there was no word that.
Yeah, there's been additions to it.
So. Correct.
So he needs to be reminded that there's a max capacity. However, you distribute that. Use that capacity. You know, you have to close off a section of something, whatever. Yeah. And our Sony enforcement officer, of course, would check on that from time to time.
The other thing is, I don't know if he has the ability to put in more parking, right? I mean, I don't know that side well.
It's certainly well within conservation jurisdiction. Since the. That's great work passing right by the uh, that's two hundred feet. Jurisdiction.
Would be good to see a site plan with. The parking delineated to see. Where we are. Just a clue, at least.
I'm going inside.
Trying to get some sort of clues.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna have to be. It's gonna have to be a revised site plan which reflects. A parking calculation. And it's gonna limit, it's gonna limit, and I don't care if it's caveat or it says it can be. Wherever it's gonna be, but it's gonna limit the total capacity if you include everything.
It also needs to show the deck and you just be a little correct on the final site. Hudson.
Yes.
T houses.
Okay. Alright.
Just wanted to, I guess, the bring it to a point, I will distribute correspondence uh, up in the chair on that, so that uh. That everybody understands the need to. Amendment site plan.
Uh, the Gregor. Parson.
I think we are. I don't see any reason why we need to keep that uh, under our routine business. I did share uh, some insight and a surveyor's name. Mr. Redwork would be consulting.
Yeah, this is not a many. Cool, depot square bond discussion with us.
Spoke with the Lebeckas today. DPW has a punch list, the biggest concern to resolve. Okay, uh, the biggest concern to resolve was just making sure that the basins out there were constructed with the proper volumes, uh, so they didn't change a little shape, so the Lebeckas, which is the needs to provide that information, Randy Brown. Believes that. Is required before we look at reducing the bond, haven't said that much, I think the bond is. Yeah, very conservatively high, um, at this point, we just like to make sure that the request to put it down to. I forget, it's twenty twenty-five, uh, it's a fraction of what it is.
Yeah, we have protected panel on there, yes. That's my problem.
For sure, uh, but uh, and. The, there's been a contractor out there working on a few punches that I think as well, so. I expect to see that shortly, whenever we get the certification, but we'll keep that under routine business.
Master Plan Advisory Committee update. Ah, yes. The good news is, survey is out. Uh, it closes August thirty-first. It's uh, online and of course, some folks. Have fun getting it to work online, depending if you're Android or I. iPad or an iPhone or a. Uh, Firefox or uh, whatever. It's interesting, but we're getting input, uh, I believe we're over a hundred now probably. I think it was ninety-one, the last time Ken uh, sent some information over from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. We're getting a hundred. Hard copies of the survey, so they'll be available. In uh, Town Hall, Clark's Office, uh, Public Library and the Senior Center for those who would like to fill it out. Hard copy.
We don't have them yet.
Not yet, they will be arriving hopefully tomorrow, I would expect.
Alright, you may want to add Senior Center to the website because that's not listed there.
It's not there? Well, we're gonna take it down there, so, yeah, we'll do that. And uh, a postcard is going to each household. And apparently it's arriving in some people's mailboxes.
Yes.
And there's an article in the Southwoods Magazine. Uh, about the. Master Plan Survey, I guess, I haven't seen it. So there we are, um, right now, our next meeting will be July twenty-first. And we'll talk about the budget, which looks very good. Update on expenditures that have been done, invoices have that we've received. And start planning for our. Meetings in the fall. Once we get the survey information together, there'll be uh, some workshops and uh, opportunities for people to meet. And discuss what it all means and what we want to do, how we want Southwood to look in twenty years.
Has there been anything in the um. In Mass Live? Other than.
Mass Live. There's been articles in.
About about the survey being open.
Uh, not that it's open.
That it was going to be, right, a week or two ago. Alright, so maybe.
And it's been on um. The Joe Dee Dee Show. And it may be on Everything Southwood. We don't know yet, but.
There's no show in July, so it'll probably be after the survey closer, very close to it.
When do they, when is it done? Late, late in the month?
Third Wednesday, and it was supposed to be, I think, next Wednesday, but there's no July.
There is no July, it'll be August, okay.
That's not the worst thing, because you have people right at the end to, you know, put the deadline on, they have to act it.
We'll make a push, yeah, in July, in August. So there we are, we're doing uh.
Alright.
I like the master plan, they don't have a budget, so what's for approval?
You don't have a budget?
Twenty-first, I believe, we're meeting again.
Uh, I think it'll be next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Nineteen.
July nineteenth.
Okay. Uh, we got a lot of surveys back, a lot of different opinions from everybody, we live in town. Even uh, our group, you know, there's. Some really think it's good, some don't think it's good, we've got some public opinion, so it's just gonna take a little while to get it all worked through, get it. Some senses, just get it back to the board to see where it's gonna go, it's gonna be a while. Something happens to somebody.
Alright. Motion, close the meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Talk about the dates.
What?
Meeting.
Yeah, put a tentative.
Okay.
Um, and I'm thinking that's maybe what we did in February, because we have a meeting on the seventh and then the fourteenth. I mean, I don't mind spending Valentine's Day with you guys.
Johnny, nothing gets you a Valentine anyways. You know that.
That's my birthday. I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say.
So you want to move it to the fifteenth?
No, the week after, week of the twenty-first is uh, winter break for sure. Again, I don't take my kids on vacations, I don't know. But it doesn't affect you or John. I mean, we do have a couple of weeks. Yep. Alright, I'll just change.
You don't have to change them, I don't.
What are we changing? Uh, are we changing?
Not.
October fourth, I will not be here.
I may not be here on the.
But I can change it, I'll just send all this email to you guys.
Yeah, and make sure that you look at um. And the town. Election and town meeting will be, since we always screw that up every year. So that's how I remember it is.
Tuesday and Thursday and May.
But yeah, every single year.
So we can't do the May sixteenth, we need to move that to the twenty-third, which is good because we had two weeks off there between. Day sixteen and June. Okay.
On the twenty-third.
And you'll probably have meetings every week in April.
Or no, because you need it, you need it by April first, so we probably.
February fourteenth is back on.
So October fourth is gonna get changed.
Yeah, it's gonna change because I'm gonna go through, I'm gonna put Mike states in there and that's gonna change it.
Just chuck this to you, give you a new one, don't worry about it.
Yeah, I'll email to you guys, because that's a lot of days.
Good effort.
So who seconded David's?
There were a couple of months there where we had an extra week in between, so there's there's space for us to move about. Alright, so Mr. Sutton, do you want to remake your motion?
No, I will second the motion.
Seconded it. We'll roll call vote, I try not. All in favor.